All right, one minute.
What up, Harv?
We have to go into town.
This session tonight.
Not usually cold. You might need that.
Good evening, welcome to the regular city commission meeting for Monday, October fourteenth. First and foremost, we'll call to order a public hearing. And take a motion for. Right after. Uh, I'm. Call it over. All right, you call it. Yeah, call it over, so roll call, please.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Present.
Swem.
Present.
George.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I move to open the public meeting hearing to hear any objections of the special assessment, the district and other matters relating to the SMACIS community ambulance. That we had voted on in our previous meeting. At this time, we'll have any opposition, you have three minutes, approach the podium.
Do we need a support on that?
Can I get a support?
I'll support.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
All good, just wanted, you moved, so.
Yeah.
I just have a question about that. I own four vacant, I own four lots, my house is on one of them, and three vacant lots on Arctic Street. Now, do I have to pay for those vacant lots too, or just for the, what the house is on?
Under the current, uh, under the current rules that were already, already in place, you would still, you'd pay for each individual lot.
Yeah, there's no way out of it. I mean, I'm on disability, I'm barely paying my taxes now.
I, I think there's assistance programs for people in similar situ- situations where you can work with the county, uh, in, in situation like that to help.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Maybe combine your lots?
Yeah.
And you only have the ones.
Uh huh. But then my taxes could go a little more, I'm sure.
I would suggest speaking to our assessor.
I was gonna say, I think, I think Mindy, excuse me, Mindy Cole is, needs to be your next step.
Okay.
Uh, but, yeah, in all actuality, you would be paying for, for separate, uh, parcels, so. According to the guidelines.
Right, that's all I thought it was.
How long have you owned them?
I've been there since ninety-two.
Yeah, so up until, other than last year, you've been paying for every one of those lots, other than last year.
So it's not gonna really be much different after tonight, than what it has been?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the vote it on in the previous meeting, there would only be twenty-five dollars per parcel instead of the original, uh, proposed forty dollars per year.
Yeah.
So it'd be a hundred dollars to you, per year?
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing nobody else approaching, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll support.
Got Dan and Raquel.
Raquel first.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you need a roll call in there?
Yes, please.
Roll call, please.
Money.
Yes.
Swem.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, just for clarification. Just to make sure it's done correctly, did we need to roll call the, the first motion officially?
I could just take a, um, do you want a voice vote of aye?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you. Got a little wonky there, but we're good now, I think.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, wonky, that's an official term. Okay, at this time, uh, seven oh four, we'll call to order the regular meeting. Uh, at this time, we have no recognition, if everybody could join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, but no, I dreamt about that stuff the other night.
Take that.
Yeah, I broke my.
Yeah, I'm just gonna wait till she.
I'm good.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Present.
Swem.
Here.
George.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
This is money, I'd move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll support.
Roll call, please.
Swem.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I will take any public comments, uh, on the agenda items only, and please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name's Randy Hendrickson. City of Buchanan property, commercial property owner and Buchanan township resident. Um, I am here to also wear the Live Buchanan hat, co-chair hat, um, and talk to you about the, uh, social district, um, line item that you guys will be handling under reports by departments, committees and boards. Um, I'd just like to, uh, make a, a quick, um, or take a quick moment to show support, um, for the amendment and updated map that, uh, Rich will be presenting later. Um, I think it's incredibly important for us to, uh, look to amend that map to, um, entice new businesses, to, um, pre- maybe predict and help also, um, include businesses that are, are now potentially going to be in those areas. Um, and also just to, uh, redo what we did earlier, right? I mean, things change, so ultimately, since the initial social district map was created, um, a lot has changed. So I just wanted to show support, and if you guys have any questions for, uh, Live Buchanan, I can also answer those questions as well at any time, thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Good evening, I'm Michael Reed, I'm one of the owners in the McCollum Project Downtown Buchanan. Uh, I'm here tonight to follow up on the liquor license, uh, redevelopment license that you guys have approved, uh, earlier this year. We've been working closely with the state, and we're down to the final submission steps. Uh, tonight, we're requesting expansion of the social district footprint, uh, including our property. Uh, currently, the district ends, uh, I believe on the corner of Rose Street and Days Avenue, and this expansion is critical for us to proceed with the State of, uh, Michigan Liquor Commission. And as required, we've submitted all of our, uh, due diligence on, uh, acquiring existing licenses that are in escrow, uh, three different times, and we're unsuccessful all three times. And we ask that you, uh, approve the expansion to help finalize the state requirements, thank you.
Thanks, Michael. All right, uh, seeing no additional, uh, public comments, uh, this time, I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll so move. My supports.
Thank you, roll call, please.
George.
Yes.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swem.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, um, at this time, uh, we will have Frank Walsh from Walsh Municipal Services LLC, and he will do a presentation for us.
There he is. Frank, can you hear us?
I can, good evening.
Hey Frank. Evening Frank.
Frank. I see you have a new member.
She's hiding over here, there she is.
Okay, there you go. Um, so, yeah, we are trying to, uh, get ahead of the Thanksgiving break, so, the Thanksgiving holiday, so, we posted the position on Friday. It's a typical four week deadline, um, of course, we, um, updated the brochure that we used last time, and surprisingly, I guess for me, the response thus far has been really, really strong. Uh, we have, uh, probably already, you know, you hope to have three, four, five qualified candidates at the end, and we already have two or three in the first four days, so this is, we are ahead of where we were significantly with the last, uh, round. The due date, uh, is four weeks from Fridays, and the due, the deadline to apply is Friday, November eighth. And then I would hope to be in front of you in person, um, I think you meet on the twelfth, which would be the second Tuesday of, um, November. I would hope to meet with you in person, that would be a closed session, and that's allowed under the Michigan Open Meetings Act to go into a closed session, to review those candidates that are requested confidentiality. So we would do that on November twelfth. At that evening, you would pick your three, four, five candidates that you want to bring in, like last time, we interviewed three, if I recall. Then I would notify them right after the twelfth that they, um, had been selected. Try to get an interview in, interviews in before Thanksgiving. And so be thinking about, and I know it's deer season, and I know it can be difficult, um, but think about November nineteenth, twentieth, or twenty-first, that's a Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday. Obviously, the date's up to you, but you wouldn't want to go next week because you're in the Thanksgiving. So, if we have a deadline on the eighth, I meet with you on the twelfth, I notify them right away, and then we interview seven, eight, nine days later on the nineteenth, twentieth or twenty-first. Following that, there could be second interviews, up to you, there could be a, uh, offer extended, up to the, up to the commissioners. And from there, I would complete a background check and contract negotiations between the candidate, and of course, that's where all the compensation stuff comes up. Um, which we have no idea where that'll be until we find out the strength of the candidates, um, and we sit down and we negotiate. And that can be done in a number of ways, it can be conducted, um, through me, can be conducted by, um, a couple of commissioners, and we can get to that in November when we get to that point. So that's the key thing tonight, November eighth deadline, meet on the twelfth, select candidates, interview eighteen, nineteen to twenty-first, and try to get a candidate selected before Thanksgiving, and if we do that, then the candidate would start around January sixth on Monday. That's the schedule that I'm looking at, it's, there's not a lot of, not a lot of, uh, wiggle room there, uh, with the holidays and everything. If we get into December when we're interviewing, then you're looking at mid to late January before the candidate would start. So that's kind of the schedule, um, I'll be, um, it's already posted on the, um, MML website, and we allow that to, to, to stand alone for a few days, and then we go to LinkedIn. We already have it on Indeed, we'll do a couple of other, um, services as well, Glass Door and others. And then we do, um, in the second, two and a half weeks into the process, we do what's a personal outreach, we combine who we know in Michigan, who might be a good fit, geographically and other things, we have a list of hundreds of candidates, hundreds of people in the state, not necessarily candidates, but we have a lot of people to draw from and try to get them interested, um, in Buchanan, it's a tough recruitment market. Salaries are up, candidate, the number of candidates, uh, qualified candidates is down, uh, so we have to turn over a lot of, uh, everything we can to, uh, generate candidates, but so far.
It's gonna see rocks.
Compared to the last process, well ahead of where we were. So I'll stop there and see if you have any questions about process, candidates, what we're gonna do, anything going forward.
Are we gonna put it on our website?
On the Buchanan website?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
I'll be working with Kayla, I think it's Kayla, right?
Calla.
Calla.
Two L's, no Y.
Okay, yeah, we'll be, uh, yeah, she's been great to work with, she was great to work with in the last recruitment, uh, very responsive, and I don't get that in a lot of communities, or in some communities. Um, but yeah, we'll be getting it on the Buchanan website for sure, because local candidates, strong, good local candidates make strong candidates.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Thank you Frank. Yeah, thank you Frank.
Raquel, you had the update.
Thank you.
Yep, anything else?
Well, looking forward to seeing you soon.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, if you, if you know or maybe, again, the person does not, you don't have to invent a city manager to be a great city manager, look at Tim Lynch, Tim Lynch was never a city manager, but he had the right personality, the right fit, and I think from everything I can gather, did a tremendous job, and is doing a tremendous job. Uh, but Tim had that exactly what you're looking for, the complete package that had the ability to work with people and strong managerial skills. So if you know or need one locally, I mean, that's how we found Tim, if you don't have one locally, have them contact me, they don't have to invent a city manager. Thank you.
Thanks Frank.
It's gonna be very hard to replace Tim, I'm about ready to cry.
I, I can't say that I don't agree with that sentiment, that's.
Would you give me a handkey?
Let's keep this under control. All right, um, very good, well, uh, looking forward to some great candidates, hopefully, uh, we get some solid ones to us on interviews, and I think that in the last six years, I think this one will be a little bit more scrutiny that there wasn't maybe before, even more so, so.
Yeah, we're gonna definitely look at background checks.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to reports by departments, committees and boards, uh, Mr. Rich Murphy.
Thank you, uh, just a few items for you, um. In twenty twenty-one, we created a social district, and, uh, we, since then, a lot has changed in Buchanan, we've had several, um, significant catalytic investments in downtown, we've had new business synergy, um, and we, uh, have not used this tool to the extent that we can, because we don't have as many participants that are able to participate in the social district. Part of that is due to the state limiting the licensing. Um, as you know, there's quotas and the state limits licensing, um, the good news is, we have a way around that, and the city has been aggressive to pursue the redevelopment liquor license path, um, which we have, uh, several applications in now to, uh, the liquor commission. So really, this is a proactive step in actually being able to use the social district, because we're going to have more redevelopment liquor licenses. One has been approved, one is very close to being, another one is very close to being approved in, in terms of delivery, uh, project, again, um, multimillion dollar boutique hotel. And, you know, just, you have to think about this as an economic development tool, um, if we, our main goal is to bring in jobs and, and investment. And why do we do that, is because we want to grow, uh, health of our economy and lower our taxes. If you, if you increase the tax base with five or six or ten more projects like delivery eventually will produce on the tax rolls, um, this is how you build the tax base, that's the only way to lower taxes. These significant investments, when you talk about a five million dollar investment in Buchanan, um, it requires almost by definition a liquor license, because, uh, the, the entertainment experience that you're creating um, in cuisine and a lot of the liquor, um, profit margin is, is reached by the liquor license, so it is critical for us to grow, uh, the district and be able to, to get liquor licenses in the hands of these, uh, investors, so, um, that's where we are. We did take quite a bit of time in looking at the, the map, and we both looked at anticipating future investment and perhaps even incentivizing future investment due to the fact that, uh, an asset or a cool redevelopment property is inside the map. So, you know, if you want to look at our competitors, our competitors are using tools like this to their benefit, right? And so we have to look at this same tool in the economic toolbox and say, we gotta, let's use it to our, our, uh, highest benefit possible. Um, so we did, uh, consult, uh, Live Buchanan, and I've consulted other resources, and we looked at this, um, and we think this is a major improvement that will yield, again, more investment and growth of tax base in the long term. So I, I would, uh, emphatically request that you approve this so that we can get down to the state level and, and have the map updated, we'll do a little tweaking of the map on the maintenance plan, um, I have been in, I have been in touch with, uh, Chief Burnett and, uh, on the changes, and, um, we're ready to, uh, to launch it, because what, what this will do is allow more participants, so. With that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
My questions all go to the state, is this a stipulation of the state to get a liquor license, to have a social district?
No. No, that's not the, it's not a stipulation, it's just.
It's not a stipulation, but i- if a, a licensee does need state approval as well, even through the social district.
Correct me if I'm wrong, there, there is, is there a minimum that have to participate for the social district to actually exist, that is the key component?
There needs to be a minimum of assets, three.
Three, right?
For the social district to be considered.
So an answer, is that similar to where you were going?
No.
Okay.
So, could these establishments, cause the BMW sold, that's public knowledge now.
Yeah.
They're, I'm assuming is applying for a liquor license, correct?
They are, and that's one of the agenda items tonight.
I see that.
It's just an administrative correction, essentially.
So are they capable of getting a liquor license if they weren't in the social district?
Yes, but, they, we, we don't have enough licensees in the social district right now to even have, operate one.
No, but, no, I'm not.
But to answer your question, no, they're not required.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and thank goodness we have this ability for us to apply for the state licenses because of the limited amount that the state offers, so, which, when the owners purchase the property, they're, well, I'm sure they're made aware that if it's sold, that's it, and it goes away, it's not transferable.
It's not, non-transferable.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, it's non-transferable.
Correct.
In the social district, if you get your liquor license that way.
It, it's a separate thing from the social district, so if we didn't even have a social district, the same laws would apply to that license, if it was sold, it's non-transferable.
See, the only reason why I'm asking this is I'm trying to figure out if the state is stipulating this, you know, stipulating this as far as liquor license, I mean, we could go into the cost, it's not got any argument against the social district.
Yeah.
I just wanted to see, find out if Big Brother's overstepping.
No, they're essentially giving us the leeway to create the social district, and then we have parameters to work within that social district, but businesses don't have to participate in relation to their liquor license, either through that process of traditional licenses or through us, they don't have to participate in the social district, so if there is a particular restaurant downtown, they don't have to, there, there was one, I'm not, it doesn't make a difference, it's one, but they chose not to participate.
Right.
So, I mean, we currently are looking at a hundred and fifty different districts within the state of Michigan that currently have a social district. Uh, of those hundred and fifty-five have already expanded their social district area because of increased popularity and, and the increase of, uh, businesses that are, that are created within that social district. Uh, so they, they had to expand it, so with breweries and restaurants going in, um, you know, I mean, we have them as close as Holland, Grand Haven, South Haven.
Well, Bridgeman, Bridgeman has a social district that they, they expanded, I think, this, this year.
Bridgeman. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was just trying to get my head wrapped around it, cause my, it, mine, you know, I mean, even though I'm advocates for some things, this whole open container thing scares the bejesus out of me when it comes to liability.
And that makes sense.
You know, I mean, and, and, you know, either you can or you can't, and I'm sure it's a police officer's nightmare too, but it's, it's, I just wanted some clarity on where the state was involved in it. But the o- the open container, uh, part of that, it, it, it requires you to have the, the special cups and, you know, those kind of things, walking down, walking down the street with the Budweiser, you know, that ain't gonna cut it, Harvey's gonna have his guys jumping all over that, so.
So, for, for instance, if you're in South Haven, you get a cup and it has a sticker on it from the particular establishment, they put the date and time on it. Each municipality can set those policies and what they expect from the participating, uh, businesses, and then it also cannot be greater than sixteen ounces, most of them only do twelve to control the amount of consumption.
Is it beer only?
It really is dependent upon, it is, so.
It's liquor. So I got a bottle of Jack Daniels in my back pocket, see, I don't want to go down that road, but that's, that's where, that's where my mind is because of my background.
I completely understand, and I think if there wasn't a hundred and fifty within this, this state, and if I hadn't participated in at least six of them, and saw that, although justifiable what you're saying, without question, what I've seen in those communities, because it's something that is already socially acceptable, there's parameters within each boundary, signs placed, there's more of a visual acuity as to what's going on with those drinks, most of the cups I've seen are clear, so that they can monitor what's in those cups. Now, is there gonna be people who violate it, absolutely, as the officers can attest, I'm sure there's people who smoke cannabis in their car and they shouldn't either.
Well, I mean, the other point is, we already have one right now.
So we can't. All justifiable.
This is just expanding.
I'm not arguing that point at all, I, I just wanted to bring up the state's involvement in it.
Yeah, absolutely, so what I've seen in the researches and in Rich, we can attest to, is I don't see that the state really has much to do with it except for allowing municipalities to create it and then monitor it and, and control it how they see fit, I'm sure there's some state involvement if it does get out of control of the sorts.
They look to the locals to establish the district.
Yeah, I mean, even Ferndale, I went, looked at them and they actually have it all year long so that they can have warm drinks as well, which I thought was a pretty interesting thing, considering, uh, White Christmas, which has now changed, I apologize, and, or what the name is right offhand, but. There we go, thank you, I knew that Randy would have it, Bugtown Christmas.
Oh, oh.
Right? So, I mean, this is future looking, I think the greatest asset that we have is that we're staying in line with what the expectations are of other communities, and when people transition between communities, now they find that connectivity and say, okay, this is normal, this is standard, this is something I feel comfortable with, and that they, they don't, uh, and actually, they start to look for it, and I think that's, that's a bonus for us, so.
Yeah, I think, I think that, uh, it's been established long enough, uh, and like you said, you've visited more than I have, but I mean, I've been in a couple of different cities that, and it's pretty, and it's pretty well regulated, and the people that do it, you know, aren't just.
It's a very comfortable thing.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a different kind of atmosphere than it is sitting in the local tavern and getting swacked at eleven o'clock at night, I mean, you know.
And, people are actually out, as Raquel and I were talking earlier, it's, people are out moving around the community and going into shops, and I think that adds to the, the accessibility of waiting for a, a table in the future that we have a restaurant that is busy enough that it has to take numbers, that they could move around.
So the only change to this map is the extension down? Down, uh.
Was it down?
Down Days Avenue? Days Avenue. This was the original map?
There's some other amendments, we put in, uh, the Moose Lodge, for example, as part of it, anticipating, because we've gotten some entertainment restaurant hits on it, uh, from developers, you know, so the, to the extent we could incentivize and say, hey, now, it's a, it can be a redevelopment tool, now you're in the social district, you know? So, um, you know, we have, uh, River St. Joe's Restaurant opening, they're telling us there'll be a participant in the social district. So we're finally getting to the point where we can use the tool, and we have a chance to, you know, the critical piece is delivery, because it's a, it's a very, very significant investment. Uh, multimillion dollars that we're leveraging a one point two five of state grant money, and we want to set the developers up to succeed, so, uh, they do need this tool.
And I think in addition, it, it just adds more walkability, I mean, we have chunks on this side of town, we have Randy on this side of town, we have Layman's on this side of town, and as we start to expand our entertainment visio- visual acuity within the city, then we can start to push people in those directions to say, hey, it's not just this section of town or that section of town, it actually has viability throughout the entire city, so, um, it's, it's been a real success at the cities I've been to. Uh, to your point, the people who participate are not the ones that are, are going to cause ruckus, and, because they don't want to be recognized that they're using these cups in the first place, so uh, there's, it puts additional guardrails in ways for the police to visually see who's participating in it, uh, in comparison to just putting it in their own cup, so.
And you've, uh, you've looked into this, right Harvey, and I'm quite sure, I mean, I know that you're pretty astute on these kind of things. Yeah, so, and you know, I mean, it may be a benefit to the police department in the long run, you know, we may be able to, uh, accumulate another officer, so, you know, get him on a payroll, so, yeah.
All right.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich, any other comments, questions? All right, I'll take a motion.
I'd move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four, ten slash twenty-eight as presented.
Do I have support?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Whedon.
Yes.
Bianski.
Yes.
Money.
Yes.
Swem.
Staying business interest.
George.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Thanks, Rich.
Next item is, uh, when we started up CDBG, I told you guys a couple of meetings ago that I'd be coming with some policy items because they're required by CDBG. And Tim and I did our homework on this, and it, with, along with Cal. Items because they're required by CDBG, and Tim and I did our homework on this and it, with, along with Calon. We're, we realized we had procedures already in place for the other items, so the only thing we need to. Adopt is a best practice, it's called a walkaway policy, and what it does is it just gives a city a safeguard. If it walks into a, a home that is like, um, kind of. An extreme amount of money that the city doesn't have funding for, that would need to be, uh, repaired. And so it gives, if, if, if funds aren't available, uh, gives a city kind of an off-ramp to say, look, we. We can't, you'll take over our whole program if we do this, you know, so, um, this was just, uh, suggested to us by. Sonia Vitale and I talked to Rick Huff as well, uh, about these, uh, 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 city manager of Niles. And, um, Tim and I discussed it and we see this as a, an appropriate best practice to adopt, and it's just. You know, if the state, if the CDBG were coming and audit, we can say we have the walkaway policy, best practice, that'd be good for us, you know?
Yeah, it's just a, it's just a fail-safe, right?
Yeah, it's just a fail-safe, yep.
I'll move.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the Home Order Assistance Program Walkaway Policy as presented.
Do we have a second?
This is Money, I'll support that.
Very good, roll call, please.
Mianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, last item, I, we kinda were here before, um, we've done this before. When you, when, uh, applicant applies for the liquor license, redevelopment liquor license, they review. The application and then they say, certain items are deficient, and they kinda kick back your application. Well, it's just an administrative error, um, they just want, uh, the MCO, um, reference there for a new class C license. And I don't think we had that exact language.
No, we've done this a couple of times, we and Rich know this form by heart now, because the first few times we did it, it was administrative error, we didn't put the MCL down. And so technically, that's all.
They kick it back and, you know, you guys already approved this resolution, it's just that little line didn't say the exact language.
Okay. Alright, so I'll take a motion.
Uh, that, Money, so approves.
Uh, do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you, roll call, please.
One question.
Sorry.
This is for the B and W?
Yes, sir.
I think we need to, you know, I just wanna mention that.
Yeah, thank you.
This is for the B and W.
That's, that's important.
So the B and W is gonna reopen, so, that's very good news, that's it.
That's really good news.
Do you know who the owner's, uh, SW Entertainment Holdings?
It's the same owner.
Oh, same guy?
Yeah, oh, Lee?
Same.
Not Lee, not, not the previous owner, the owner who's had it for a year and a half or whatever. Um, but he finally pursued the liquor, redevelopment liquor license path.
Okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Mianski?
Yes.
Who was the mo- sorry, who was the motion of support, so I can write?
George?
George?
Money first, George second.
Money, George.
I move, Raquel's support.
You guys were quick on me that time.
Getting top of it, Patrick.
You guys are fast, my hand on that one.
Alright, thank you very much, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
Alright, uh, next up, uh, Clerk Department report?
If you guys didn't realize, there's an election coming up.
What? Yay!
Hey, we're, we're getting down to the wire, um, just a quick update, we have an election November fifth, but early voting hours start October twenty-sixth. Um, you guys, if you're in the city of Niles or, city of Niles, Niles Township, Buchanan City, Buchanan Charter, you guys vote at the Niles Courthouse. Um, times, dates are all listed outside and on our website, or you can call me and I'll tell you when to go and where to be, okay? Um, otherwise absentee ballots are available as well, too, please walk in and get one if you don't wanna wait in line that day. Uh, it's a pretty big ballot, so if you're nervous or anything, you can always take it home, do it there, and you can actually bring it to an early voting site, or you can bring it on election day and put it in the tabulator yourself. Or you can turn it in to me and Beth Murphy will count your ballot on election day.
I'm gonna hold on to it.
Um, otherwise, we had an election commission meeting for the city and for the county, um, public accuracy done was, was done today, this morning. For early voting, so everything looked great there, public accuracy for the city is on Friday at nine AM, if you're bored and wanna come see me and Courtney, we'll be here putting ballots in the tabulator. And you can watch how we test and check everything to make sure everything's accurate, so.
I just wanted, the cutoff road is Glenlord, isn't it, for the north and south of the county?
I know it's, it's Baroda Township and Bridgman City, so wherever their lines are.
So it's south of Glenlord Road?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Baroda joins south and Bridgman joins south instead of going north.
Okay, s- people can walk in here, get an absentee ballot, fill it out and hand it right back to you though, can't they?
They can do that, they can put it in the Dropbox or they can mail it back, I always suggest if it's two weeks before the election, please don't use the post office, use the Dropbox, it's much easier.
I've been pushing it, Cal.
Please do, we're doing really well, we've issued about five hundred AV ballots so far, I'm gonna guess we're probably gonna have about seven hundred by the time election day comes around. Uh, the online, if, it's really easy, if you don't have the time to come see me, um, you can go onto the Michigan Secretary of State website, fill out the application, it comes right to my inbox. I print it and send you a ballot right away in that mail that day.
And just to confirm, if they have an absentee ballot and they wanna vote in person, they can bring it in that and then vote on the paper.
Yep, and there's a lot of people that, because it's a bigger ballot, and especially like first time voters and maybe our elderly community that doesn't wanna stand in line, or if it's. Too much for them, take it home, then come in, and you can put it in the tabulator yourself, and you can do that at an early voting site as well, so.
Okay, very good, thank you so much for all the hard work.
Thanks, Cal.
Unbelievable, unbelievable work, thank you so much.
We're getting there.
Yeah, we're almost there. Okay, uh, we have no unfinished business, uh, this time we'll move on to new business, uh, for under new business, item A, resolution twenty twenty-four dot one zero. Slash two nine, consider this resolution, the special assessment district for emergency medical services through SMACIS, uh, that, and that would create the district.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dot one zero slash two nine, special assessment district for emergency medical services through southwestern Michigan. Community ambulance service district one, confirmation of special assessment role.
Thank you, do we have support?
Money, I'll support.
Thank you, roll call, please, our discussion, any further discussion?
Well, should we say what we resolved?
Yeah, you mean for the record, for the, from our special, uh, meeting?
I mean, we resolved that we were, basically, it's gonna go, it's forty dollars the first year, right?
It was.
It was.
Was.
Now it's twenty-five, we received a letter. So it's twenty-five starting this first tax season, and then twenty-five consecutively after that.
Saying is we're responsible for.
Oh.
Yeah. Twenty-five dollars is what we're resp- the, the parcels are.
So it's not the forty dollars, it's not gonna be the twenty-five fifteen split?
Yeah.
It is gonna be the twenty-five fifteen split?
Yeah.
So that, we're paying it, we're just paying fifteen dollars, that's why I wanted to raise it.
Yes, correct.
Paying fifteen dollars out of the general fund, and we're paying twenty-five dollars per taxpayer parcel.
Correct.
Correct.
So, it, we're still paying forty dollars.
Yes, correct.
And it goes to fifty by the end of the five years.
And it's fifty by the end of the five.
Yep.
And we're gonna have a better attendance or somebody that wants to swing a sledgehammer. To get some clarity, Cal, right? Alright, I just wanted to clear that up, because it's very, it's been the same thing for nine years.
Right, well, the city's gonna pay the twenty-five specials, the, the residents, per parcel, twenty-five dollars for the next five years. Then we're gonna take care of the rest of the city, it's gonna come out of the general fund. Doug and Tim have already obviously realized that this is coming, they had already budgeted for it. So, when we get the bill from SMACIS to pay our portion, and that will be talked about in your budget meeting and any updates, your quarterly meetings that, I think it's gonna be starting to happen now. Where we're at, uh, and how much, because we're gonna get an invoice from SMACIS.
Did we ever get invoice for last year yet?
Not that I know of.
No.
So, I mean.
So, we're gonna wait for that invoice, though. And we're gonna get it in front of you guys, so.
The structure, it's, it's being restructured out there.
Well, and I believe they're a little bit behind because it's the year prior.
Larry's being very polite. It's been restructured for fifteen years.
And in this place, it's the right place to be polite, I think where we, uh, we focused that one is where I know you want to.
I'm gonna tie the sledgehammer to my tail.
Yeah.
Alright, I hear that.
Okay.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Swem?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Mianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay. Alright, very good, thank you, uh, item B, street sweeper, consider the purchase of a new street sweeper.
Okay, we have a big investment in front of us, uh, the, the commission met in March, and the new sweeper was one of the more prominent. Uh, items on the priorities for the commissioners back in March, so we've got it on the agenda for here tonight. The mechanical street sweeper, we're intending to purchase one to replace our existing two thousand and seven Elgin Street Sweeper. The equipment is critical in providing clean city streets and maintaining the city's compliance with the state of Michigan's MS four, uh, program. Which stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Program. Uh, we have two, uh, reputable firms in front of us with proposals, uh, one is M-Tech Company out of Livonia, the other is La Queen. Equipment, and I, you have, uh, some information on that firm in front of you. We've compared the two proposals, and again, they're both reputable firms, as I look through the specifications on them, we have the global M-three street sweeper. It's got a larger engine at a hundred and thirty horsepower Cummins engine, it's got a bigger hopper at the five point six cubic yard hopper compared to the three point six. Got larger gutter brooms, uh, smaller turning radius, and it appears to be more maintenance friendly with, uh, accessibility of the hydraulic hoses and. Some of the maintenance functions, our, our DPW personnel have vetted these units, and they've determined that, uh. The global M-three sweeper has more, uh, maintenance friendly issues on it. Uh, the proposed pricing would include delivery, startup and training for our personnel, uh, they, they would also include a return site visit by the M-Tech. People to visit prior to the expiration of the warranty, to inspect and check out the unit and make sure any issues that have come up in the first year. Have been addressed prior to the warranty expiration. Uh, with that, our investment, uh. For the global M-three comes to three hundred and fourteen thousand one fifty-five, for the, uh, McQueen. Elgin Pelican, it comes to about three hundred and three thousand nine thirty, and they would provide a, uh, trade-in value of seventeen five on our existing one. Based on all that, it's the general consensus of our DPW personnel and myself to go with the M-Tech Global M-three Sweeper. For three hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars.
How are we paying for it?
We've got, uh, baskets of funds to get, uh, to pay cash, uh, from the street funds, we've got water sewer funds, we've got general fund investments we can draw from. So it will spread it across, uh, a few different funds, so it doesn't impact one fund.
But no payments, no interest, no?
No payments, no.
Cash.
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 It's considered a capitalized expense?
Capital investment.
So it's not a?
I wanna make this motion, cause I wanna spend this money.
You do wanna make the motion?
I wanna make it.
Go for it. It's something I never would hear, please let him have it, just.
Well, I mean.
You own this one.
Yeah, this is, this is almost dreamlike, I move to approve the purchase of street sweeper per proposal from M-Tech for global. M-three mechanical sweeper in the amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Well said, do we have support?
This is Money and I'll support that.
Probably the most enthusiastic I've seen about spending money. Okay, roll call, please, any, well, any further discussion?
Just for the public's awareness, you know, this has been an ask of the commission at least, at least two, maybe even, at lea- it might even be three years. And we've been dumping a lot of money into this piece of equipment, I wanna say, well, Raquel did some research on useful life and. Um, we're well past our useful life on this, we've, we went down the rabbit hole of borrowing it from other communities, working on shared service agreements, I mean. Multiple different avenues to try to avoid spending this level of capital, in the end, the best decision was for us to buy new for the longevity of the community. Um, if Mike was here right now, he, you know, I'd tell him, make sure we're following the maintenance manual on this bad boy because. This was your big ask in March and we all made the agreement to invest in it for the city, so, let's make sure we're maintaining it appropriately.
This was very, very much, when I was commissioner before, this was always a complaint, you know, they, we were piecing it together, it was a lot of money. We didn't know where the money was coming from, that's why I'm excited about it, th- and the thing about it is, is I talked to Tim extensively about it. Hydraulics, more hydraulics, more hydraulics, you wind up loosening five hoses to fix one hose and you wind up with three leaks instead of one. So with it being right there, it's bigger, it's, the old one's seventeen years old, it's about ten years past its life, so we have been nursing it. And it's nice, it's just wonderful to pay cash for something, it's just wonderful.
I agree, I think that's how municipals should work, anything under half a million dollars, we should be paying cash for that.
And that means you're doing CapEx correctly.
CapEx, that's right, we like it.
Yeah, we do.
Speaking my language.
Alright, roll call, please.
George?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Mianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
And Swem?
Yes. Thank you. Alright. At this time, uh, we'll consider entering a closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen dot two six eight, section.
We gotta do checks, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you got one more.
Oh, I apologize, I skipped right over, we were so excited about spending money, I just skipped expenditures. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, well, excited.
Okay, so, my apologies, item C, consider, uh, approving the expenditures for October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four in the amount of one hundred and eighty-three thousand. Four hundred and seven and seventy cents.
I'll move to approve the expenditures as presented.
Yeah, do we have support?
Support.
Roll call, please.
Weeden?
Yes.
Mianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, very good, now on to item D, uh, consider entering closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen dot two sixty-eight, section eight, one C. For discussions relating to the negotiation of collective bargaining agreements.
I'll move to enter closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen two six eight, section eight, one C, discussions relating to negotiation of collective bargaining agreements.
Do we have support?
I'll support.
I got George.
I got George. She beat you, Larry.
Roll call, please.
Mianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
You're in close.
Thank you.
Quick one.
Yep.
We won't be back gone long, but there's no sense in leaving. Ten minutes, we'll see you later, I'll call you about that interview, okay?
Cause of the district expansion, down Days and that is. Yeah, and it includes delivery, um, the McCollum Library. McCollum Liver, McCollum, and C. That's the boutique part.
Yeah.
And it wraps in some of the other businesses on Days Avenue.
Yeah.
And you said you're also including like. The Moose is a, kind of an attempt to stretch downtown, um, we had developers lots who would have. Kinda have a restaurant concept, so we think of reuniting, social district that might call, uh, incentivize them. Yeah, it's pretty much the downtown, like, front main base. But it didn't go only so far on Main, that, and towards? No, we just, you know, we just, we didn't, there's more happening, so we need to expand. We have a couple buildings that are up for sale, that are in the district that weren't in it, and again, we feel like it paid, it's a, something the seller could advertise. And I guess it goes up red, but some of the displays doesn't.
So, um.
And it was like mainly. Yeah, it was just correcting the application, citing, citing the statute. It sounds like they haven't had too many problems, can't be interesting. And you know, they're in full construction probably every, this time every other year. I walked through the other day. Looks a little bit, the first one we get to. Very cool, that's our budget. Cause, you know, we don't have a hotel, so right now. I don't think that we.
I don't think that we.
The state is, the state is like, you know, it's like one little thing. Frustrated, too. Yes, then you gotta get.
Originally, I remember.
No, because they, they only have to be located in the. Yeah, it's been very slow and we need more people up there. Three places around the corner. When? It's supposed to be.
I think it'll be farther. Target them.
Because I saw, I mean, you have. When they're ready. You have a minute, you know, it's too good. Okay. You know, it's gonna be like an industrial. But in a cool way, but they're gonna take up like a cool colored school. Part of it is real, open office. Yeah, they, they have a park.
I'll be traveling, so. Cross country meets over. It doesn't matter, I think they'll probably want us next to ourselves, so we can. I think we bring in as a PDF once we're all happy with her. I, I, they were so close to getting it done that it's like, I'm starting to lose myself, but I'm glad you're still. Wait, we all, you're not showing. So the one I saw was different.
No, we, we.
Okay. Yeah, so if we get together. Have, I was weird. So, but what I try to do is.
Yeah, we, we had many, many.
Yeah, we, we. We've had several iterations. She, she, her strategy was like. Straight lines.
I tried to.
Yeah, you know, that sort of fits like. At, at some point, we're just like, you're gonna stop. They don't, they give you very little.
You know, we're two, two hours.
But the, the other thing is. You know, if we get one person. If we, I don't know. Because we, we haven't done and no. She's set, that's kind of what Annie and the liberals. No, we've not, I don't have any information about it.
That's how it's supposed to be.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
I said I, you know, I.
Shit, yeah. Okay. Oh, goddamn.
Yeah, yeah, we'll wait.
Sounds like your little go-kart motor.
Mm-hmm.
That's what it is, we're, we're on.
You good, Dan?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. All right, I'll take a motion to re-enter open session.
I'll so move.
Do you have support?
I'll support.
Roll call please.
Money?
Yes.
Swem?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Yansky?
Yes.
Very good, all right, at this time, I'll cons- take a motion to take the action based on closed session discussions.
This is money, I'd so move.
Do you want to read this, just to make sure?
I move to approve the AFF CME Union Contract Effective July first, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, do we have support?
I'll support.
Thank you, roll call please.
Sorry.
You're okay?
Did it not sound like Patrick?
No, Money, Money Dan.
Money Dan.
Whoa, there's, usually I can hear you, all right, Swem?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Yansky?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Who cares?
Thank you very much. At this time, we have no communications, we will have public comment for non-agenda items. Please keep your comments to three minutes and state your name for the record.
I could've waited till you had been talking, sorry. Haley from Chunks, I just wanted to come down and I know Lebukannon has it on their radar. Down at, what's the park called? Veterans Park, where Chunks is, there's that new concrete pad. There needs to be a railing, I feel like, right there. We had a parent come up to the ice cream shop, their child almost fell down there and there's rocks at the bottom. It's a pretty big drop. So I'm just coming to bring forward that I think it's definitely, I know, yet, if you have more than three steps, you have to have a hand rail. So that's definitely more than three steps to go down into the creek, so I think there needs to be some sort of railing, so nobody falls.
Very good.
That's all I got for that.
Thank you very much.
Richard Martin, nine twenty Chippewa. Just want to let you know, we're gonna have a major planting on the nineteenth of this month, which is this coming Saturday. I've been together with Mike Baker a couple of times and he's indicated which holes he can dig and which he can't because of water mains and things like that, we're just gonna dig those by hand. Patrick's gonna help us on Wednesday night, if anybody wants to come take pictures, you can do that. And that's about it, I just want to let you know, we're gonna be planting, yes.
Just curious, because you happen to be the tree expert, what happened to the trees at the middle school? I know that they had been put up years ago and then they had removed them, was there something wrong? No, the ones on the right side.
Oh, those were choke cherry trees and they were determined to have a fungal disease called black knot.
Okay.
And that's why they were removed.
Okay, I had a feeling there was some justifiable. Thank you very much, just because we were involved in planting them, I noticed that they were gone. You know, you, you get, you, you recognize things that when you're involved and then they're not there, so.
I do, I always point out which tree we planted to the girls, that's when we go there.
See, it's already starting to trick.
We're in the middle, our tree's still there. Wonder. No fungal.
Are you saying?
I mean, you, we can help plant it.
Any questions?
I can't help plant, no, thanks, Rich.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
I'd like to put in a vote for city manager, I think Tim ought to stick around.
All those in favor? Call Frank, we're done.
Be a done deal.
Yeah. All right, executive comments.
She snuck, troublemaker sneaking up there.
Leave me out.
I, it's the second time I've picked on you.
He didn't see.
I know.
No, I'm sorry.
Beth Murphy, one 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 Lake Street. In the past, when we've had an election, especially for commissioners, we've had a paper that has been able to put out what their thoughts are and what they would do in the city. We've had a forum that was on, I think it was on television, because I think I watched it. Is there a plan to do anything like that? I haven't heard anything about any of the candidates except for, what was her name, Lowry? Angela? She came and spoke for a minute, but they haven't been to commission meetings or anything, which has surprised me. So, do you know if anything is coming out?
There isn't.
The Women's League usually does it and I haven't heard anything and they usually do it through the senior center. They had debates twice up there.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything formally.
And it's getting, it's three weeks away now.
I know.
So it doesn't sound like, I've reached out to Laura Lee and Angela both. They don't seem like they're hearts into it too much, so it is what it is. You know the other three, two of them are sitting up here yet.
Yeah, I know.
Hey now. Perfect.
Okay, so no more public comments, I'll move on to executive comments, city manager?
Okay, our new discharge permit has been issued for the wastewater treatment plant. So we're working out implementation of our compliance schedules and new testing requirements. For the front street retaining law, the design is complete and bid documents have been advertised and issued. We're having a pre-bid meeting on Wednesday. Bids are due Wednesday, October twenty-third. We plan to award at the October twenty-eighth meeting. And we have tentative scheduled completion by the end of December for the front street retaining law. For the McCoy Creek Culvert Days Avenue project, design is complete, bid documents have been advertised and sent out. Bids are due Tuesday, October twenty-two. Contract award on November twelfth, commission meeting. And construction can start ASAP or somewhat flexible to attract more bidders. And with completion scheduled for May of twenty twenty-five. And we will be working with the library and others in the vicinity to minimize impacts of construction for that project. At the cemetery, Cal and I are evaluating and considering new plotting software for the cemetery to assist in locating and managing the sites utilizing GIS technology. We will be migrating away from the paper records. We are exploring funds availability and pricing of the new system. And lastly, I want to thank the commission for approving the union agreement tonight, all parties will be pleased. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you, Tim. Ms. George?
Yes, so I just want to make sure that we, when we implement the special district, that we really enforce the guidelines for the liquor license, just to make sure that we can stay safe and we're just making sure that's enforced to the most upright standard. And then I think, there's one other thing, sorry. I just want to say, I appreciate Mr. Lynch, just really cleaning things up around here and I just kind of dread, I'm kind of excited, but I'm trying to, kind of just dread looking for another city manager, so I just want to make sure you know that, so I think we're all good.
Awesome, thank you very much, Mr. Yansky?
I just wanted to make a special thank you, Rich. That house over there on Victory and Richards has been there for what, fifteen years in the shape that it's in?
Oh, close to, yeah.
Or twenty? And I mean, whether the neighborhood knows it, I was always, but I could never find anybody, so thank you very much. I mean, the one right next to it is gone, that one's gone. There's the one out there by the cemetery now that's gone, it's getting two houses built on it. So that's three houses in the last six months, it's been tore down. That's not necessarily something you really want to celebrate, but it is, because all three properties were decimated, but I just wanted to put out a public special thank you to you, Rich, for taking care of that. I wish you would mention it more. The only reason why I found out was because it was on the website, but thank you. And as far as Tim, you know, I don't want to get weepy.
Oh, I want to see this.
It's been an exciting night tonight, thank you.
Mr. Money?
Yep. Once again, thanks, Tim, for working up those contracts, getting, getting all of that straightened out, I know it's, it's been real taxing, but you did a great job. I want to thank Harvey and especially the two officers that are sitting over here. I had the opportunity yesterday to participate in a, in a program at the Catholic Church. And our officers were there representing the city. I don't remember what the program was called.
Faith in Blue.
Faith in Blue. Yes, and so they participated, I guess, in local churches, but like I said, I had the opportunity to be at the Catholic Church doing a program yesterday morning and it was, it's always good to see our officers there helping out, I mean, that's to be commended. I noticed today, I, I was hoping Mike was gonna be here. The cemetery board has worked. I noticed today, I, I was hoping Mike was gonna be here, uh, uh, the cemetery board has worked on the chapel doors, I see that the fellow was out there today, uh, uh, Mr. Fleming, and, uh, I, those doors are close to being, uh, completed, so the chapel will once again be intact without the plywood, uh, on the front, so that's, uh, you know, that's, that's a plus. On another positive note, I don't know how many of you have ever heard of, it's a program called Reeds Across America, and it's a program where, um, they participate in putting, uh, uh, Christmas wreaths on veterans' graves, uh, that, this is done in Arlington and in all the major, uh, uh, national cemeteries, and then there are hoops that you have to jump through to get local cemeteries done, well, uh, we are doing that this year at our local cemetery, uh, the veteran circle has been approved for a Reeds Across America program, I'm gonna have more information on that, but they like to do, they like to do a formal ceremony, so as soon as I get more information and we get more information through the American Legion, I'm gonna make that public, and then, uh, uh, I have contacted, um, our, our local, uh, floral group here, because in our veteran circle, if you're not aware, the markers are all flat, um, the, the American Legion itself has gone out and got little, uh, those little tripod stands, so we can put the wreaths on there to, uh, so the wreaths aren't laying in the, laying in the snow, so that's gonna be taken care of, and I have one other question for, um, um, Mr. Lynch. I know we're talking about a major street skate program next year, one of the local residents here in town, or businesses, I should say, um, provides, uh, all of the plants for downtown, uh, the hanging baskets and everything, and he needs to get all of those seeds and everything started by the first of the year, uh, and he, he had a question on whether he should start doing that for this next coming year or not, and so I asked, he asked if I could bring this up, so.
I've spoken to him.
Oh, you've talked to Chuck?
Not on this particular.
Okay.
Matter, but I will reach out to him and.
Okay.
Some kind of agreement on what we.
Okay.
What our needs may be.
All right.
Okay, thanks, Larry.
Yep, thank you, and once again, I want to thank this commission for everything that they do, because this is also a hardworking group, and, uh, the decisions we have to make are all for the good of Buchanan, I feel so, thank you very much, and thank you to the staff, they do a great job.
Very good, Mr. Swem?
Oh, I got a few things to talk about tonight, so first off, excellent work on the team, I think the union and, um, the ASME union and us came to an excellent agreement that works for both parties, took us four months to reach those terms, so I'm glad everybody stayed at the table, worked hard to get that done, I appreciate everybody that was part of that. Uh, checking off, checking off boxes, right, so we said we were gonna do in March when we had our strategic planning session, um, the sweeper was a big piece of that, so I'm happy to see we're making those investments in the community like we planned we would do, starting a capital plan, following through on execution of that capital plan, um, that, that's a really big deal, um, with that said, we are gonna have a, a follow-up work session in November, um, after the election to follow up on other items that we discussed as priorities and that, so look for that to be posted, um, you know, one of those big items for me that I plan to talk about is working out a strategy for Catherine Park in this fiscal year to get some equipment in there, and that was, that was a commitment that Mark and I were, were big on, um, and I think the rest of the commission hopefully will continue to follow through on that. Uh, recently, Rich brought to my attention, uh, Amtrak South is going to begin doing some work at some point, so, uh, I've asked our, our neighboring communities to stand behind us and, and working with Amtrak to allow us to put some infrastructure underneath that for future expansion in the community, it's a great way, if we're talking long-term vision, get those pipes in the ground now, um, so if the opportunity for expansion in Buchanan Township, Bertrand Township occurs, um, that will allow us to spread the cost of our water system across others, which will in turn bring water rates down for our constituents, so, long-term planning goal, hopefully, we have that support across all communities, it seems to be there though, so, look for, look for some in- information on that in the, in the future. Uh, let's see, tomorrow, uh, if you remember, there was a group, this was back, uh, a few months, it was asked of the common to get together, all the, all the impacted parties that surround the common, whether that's the tin shop, the farmer's market, preservation society, and I know there's more than that, concert series groups to get together, uh, that meeting is actually happening tomorrow at noon at Michigan Gateway, all the leaders of those organizations, including all of us commissioners, were emailed about that, I'll be there in attendance to answer any clarifying questions as to what the directive we gave a few months ago was, so I look forward to seeing what they come up with as a collective vision, um, so we can move forward with maximizing that space to benefit all of those organizations, um, and allow them all to have a voice, um, with a collective board going forward, and that should allow us, when we need to make investments there, to know that it's a shared common collective, and where they all can hopefully benefit and have a say, and that's the goal, uh, so I, I hope others will attend, but I will definitely be there for that, and then, you know, the, can, the books continue to get better, cleaner, so huge shout out to Deb and Courtney there, I keep, continue to be impressed, I look forward to giving them more kudos as we get through the audit, so that's really, really a crowning achievement, and tonight was an excellent meeting, uh, I, I'm really proud of the progress this, this condition, this commission continues to make, I think Mark has done a fantastic job stepping in as the mayor and.
Thank you.
Keeping control and all of us working together, and I'm, I'm just really proud that we've had a lot of success, and tonight was a really, really great meeting, so thank you to my peers.
Thanks, Patrick. Uh, I don't know, I'm, thank you for everything that was said, the luxury of going last is I can just say ditto on everything that they said, um, it's really great to see that we have so many positive things that we can bring up, and it's just, and it's different for each person, uh, Patrick and myself, Randy, uh, and many others from the community of Buchanan attended a Gateway, uh, event over in Cassopolis, wonderful event, great attendance from different communities, and, and Patrick pointed out afterwards, you know, that, that it really embodies what Buchanan is, and it really is great to show off to other communities at how great it is to live in Buchanan, that the people, the, the benefits to living in Buchanan, uh, and, and that, you know, we're proud of everything that we do and we like to show it off, so it was really great that Michigan Gateway recognized that, exemplified that, I'm sorry, Harvey, you were there as well, I don't mean to forget you, sir. I, I might have done that on purpose, but. I don't wanna have Beth being the only one.
Oh.
Uh, but it, it is, Patrick said, uh, Dan has always had his way of handling things, uh, and it was really great to see him excited about making decisions tonight, and even when he isn't excited and he has poignant questions, uh, it's great to see that he does it in a constructive manner, and we really appreciate everybody's input on this commission, uh, and even in our differences, I, as I've said before, we can have casual discourse and be respectful, uh, and maintain our composure at all times, so I appreciate that from, from everybody here and in the commission as well, so. Uh, Tim, thank you very much, Cala, thank you very much, you guys are, you and the entire team, everybody is working really hard on all aspects of this city, so, thank you very much, and, uh, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll so move.
Do we have support?
Support.
Roll call, please.
George?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Giaski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Yes.
You're a jerk.
Thank you, ma'am.